Okay, we'll call the special meeting of the city council to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wierich.
Here.
Okay, Paul, will you lead us in the pledge?
After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Motion seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, no objection. We will consider it approved. We have a workshop between now and seven o'clock, maybe a little before seven, so we can make the transition. Recommendation, city council receive a report and presentation of the current fiscal status of the city and the overview of the operating budget from our city manager. The public comment on the special meeting, is that required, optional? I don't see it on the agenda.
It's required to receive public comment on the item on the agenda, the budget issues. General public comment is deferred to 7:00 P.M.
Okay. I've got several cards. I will presume that as we get into the budget item, the comments can be made at that time? Is that what you're suggesting? Or is it better to?
It may be better to take them up front, given that the councils received an initial presentation on the budget.
Okay. Okay, very good. Linda, are you out there? Yeah, there you are. Come on down. And Bill Miley, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Linda Veron Schwager. I'm the CEO for the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund. I just wanted to come back and just briefly double check that you all received the letters that I sent you that gave you a little more detail about the housing trust fund, what we do, how your money can be leveraged. And I also just wanted to clarify the asks and the process that's taken place over the last number of years. The first time I came to this city was in 2010, when we went around to every single city in the county, as well as the county themselves, to ask for investments into the housing trust fund. It was done in a, I gave a presentation, I didn't ask for a specific amount. I tried to follow up afterwards, didn't really get any leverage, so kept on moving through the other cities. I think I've been back three or four times since 2010. I met with a previous city manager, had some good discussions, but once again, didn't really get any leverage or follow up on that. And so I came back. I took a little break from meeting with you all as we continued on our business, but once we got the rest of the nine cities and the county on board, I thought it was time to come back to you all. And so I reached out to your city manager, and we had a good discussion, and that's where we are today. So I wanted to just make sure you're aware that this is not the first time I have been here. If you're, if you, I know many of you have been on for a while, but I have been here many times before to give you updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
So can you explain, in a summary, you're asking for a $50,000 investment?
Correct.
And then how does it work? I mean, there must be, the other cities, yeah, how does it work?
Sure. So each city has, that has invested in us. We say an investment because we take your funds, and we're able to leverage that up to about 10 times. So for example, I shared previously in the city of Moore Park is a great example. They gave $50,000 back in 2010, and we, in one loan, well, two loans, one project, we did a million six. So, you know, their little $50,000 for a smaller city then was put into a million six. Santa Paula, same thing, $50,000 that they invested with us in 2011, and we've done almost $900,000 in three different loans and three different developments in that city. So it goes into a pool of funds, and then we lend throughout the county. If no developer were to come from this area with a project, we can't return your investment unless there's a project for affordable housing. So there are a few cities that have not received, you know, funds back from us in a project, but we continue to always work with the developers to consider other areas of the county to invest in.
Okay, so, but just to clarify, eventually there's an investor, right?
Um, well, the in-
Developers, what I mean.
Correct. Correct. And that can be a for-profit or nonprofit.
Is there a chance of losing the money?
No.
Or you, it's a guarantee that at some point you'll return?
Correct, because as you know, we have a tremendous affordable housing crisis here.
Yes.
So this money is early money, and so currently our products are only for two to five years. So that's the other leveraging ability, is that the money comes in, it goes out, it comes in, it goes out, it goes out many, many times. And with the demand here, we expect more development in the cities. And so, no, the investment is secure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Is the $50,000 a minimum?
Uh, no. No, that's just the average that we've asked all the small cities, and each one has done $50,000.
Okay.
Yeah, but if that was not due-
Well, getting the investment, you'll get the same, you'll get the like return, is what I heard.
Correct. So what happened originally is that when we would ask cities to participate, and there was maybe only three or four cities that were involved, if two projects came in, and one was from a city that participated, and one was from a city that hadn't participated, the one that participated would get a higher scoring, and so there was some benefit. Now that we have all nine cities, you know, minus one, that doesn't really work. And so now it's really strictly based on the caliber of every project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other question, please. So let's assume for a moment that we invest the $50,000, and it's now next February 2019, and somebody comes in with a project, and it's going to be $2 million.
Mm-hmm.
They go to you, and they say, "We have a $2 million project for a little Ojai," and Ojai's put in $50,000, so the other $1,950,000 comes from investments that other cities have put into the fund, correct?
That's correct. So it's a pool. It's not divided in silos. It doesn't silo Santa Paula or Ojai. It's all one pool. And we leverage this money with public, private, and charitable money. So it, once it's invested into our pool, it's not Ojai's money, it's not Ventura's money, it's a pool of funds. So we also, we're early money, and so we encourage developers, you know, if they can get a bank to fund it at the right interest rate, go to the bank, because our money is not a large amount. And so we want to make sure that we're filling a gap that the developers have in their ability to finance affordable housing.
So the money that you're providing to them doesn't come without strings attached?
Correct.
It's like a loan?
It is absolutely a loan.
Okay.
Yes.
And what's the current interest rate?
We currently do 4%, but we're adjusting that a little bit as we see the markets changing. Pre-development is a little bit riskier, and so we have the ability to charge a higher interest rate. Historically, we haven't, but we are looking at that, because the banks are charging more for that kind of money.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, but they're very secure. We've had no defaults, again, because of the short-term nature of the loans, and, you know, one of the nice things about a smaller community is we know our developers, and they have track records. And so we're able to feel very comfortable when we lend to a People Self-Help or a Cabrillo or a Many Mansions or the Area Housing Authority. They have longstanding credibility.
Thank you.
Just one, just quick, I think. I just want to be real clear, it's not at all dependent on us doing a project, the return, the money.
No, the money doesn't come back. This is a one-time, you invest in the trust fund, it doesn't come back to you. The only way it comes back to the city is if a developer says, "We're going to build X, Y, Z units," and they borrow it from me, then therefore you get that value in that sense.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're not, the city does not get the money.
For the council's benefit, let me, maybe I can add something to this. We have, I'm in, we've been contacted by both Linda and by Mary Ann, and Bill Miley and I are trying to set a meeting up to talk about this and how to do it. And the city does have a small project that they're already been working on, on the Montgomery Street lot. And so I suggest that Bill and I meet with Linda, come back to the council, and the city manager has put money in our budget this year for the housing issue, so it'll be appropriated, not necessarily specifically for the trust, but for affordable housing, affordable housing project, which the council then could make the decision at a later date as to what works best, because we'll tell you what we're doing and see if there's something between the two of us that would work for Ojai.
Okay.
Okay?
Mayor, one more, one more. You know, the interesting thing is, we talk about affordable housing and the shortage in this community, and it's been talked about for years. So I just find it interesting that we're the only community out of the 10, the only city out of the 10, that hasn't contributed and hasn't tried to bring projects forward. It just, you know, it just strikes me as, as, just a little off, because, again, this community talks about affordability on a daily basis.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, Bill?
Okay.
And Wendy?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Obviously, I am very much supportive of affordable housing, and I've known Linda for a couple of years, so when she said that, I just smiled, so. The, two, three things about the budget. I don't know how much is in the housing trust fund, and I'd like to know that. I don't know how much is in the parking in lieu fund, and I'd like to know that. Can I find that out?
Not at this moment, but yes, okay.
Well, I asked, okay. And the third thing is, I don't believe there's enough money for code violation services. Having recently experienced some interest, I finally complained on something, and it's been a long time. I don't think that the code enforcement people have enough time. I would like to see more money put into that, so it becomes an active rather than a reactive service. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Wendy?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Barker, Director of the Ojai Valley Museum. I'm proud of the job that your local museum is doing to share our interesting local history, art, and culture with our community and with visitors from around the world, and I trust that you are also proud of your local museum. With your financial support, we've been able to serve our community in many, many different ways. The museum's open six days a week. More than 9,000 visitors toured the museum last year. We reach even more people through walking tours, school tours, and events such as town talks, art talks, and participation in Third Fridays in Ojai. Our volunteers and staff help visitors find things to do and places to go in Ojai every day. Last year, our visitor center helped over 3,400 people make the most of their time in Ojai. We collaborate with your local arts commission on joint presentations, both at the museum and at the gallery here in City Hall. And in addition, our next big exhibit that opens in July expands on their new architecture book, Ojai by Design. You will see in there, the art commission's request for funds, a line item for art storage at the museum. Those funds will be used to transform an area in our collections wing to take better care of the city's art collection, much of which we store for you. We greatly appreciate your past support and hope that we can count on your continued support. Our local history, art, and culture really sets Ojai apart from other places. This is a unique city in an amazing valley, and with your help, we will continue to share it with local residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Michael Addison?
Mayor, before Michael speaks, Wendy, what was your funding number?
We're asking for $60,000.
Sixty?
Mm-hmm.
You know what?
Michael Addison, I'm the Chair of the Arts Commission, and I wanted to provide some information in support of our budget request. The first thing I want to note is that we are asking for less money than we asked, than we were given last year. By only $250 less, but nevertheless, less money. And we're not requesting any large-scale new items like the $12,000 we requested last year. Instead, as Wendy just said, we found a much, much less expensive mode of storing the art at the museum in the proper facilities, and that's included in our total budget request. The other thing I want to highlight is there are two significant changes in the way the money is distributed within our budget request. One is that we're asking for an increase in the amount of money available for grants to artists. We have so many splendid artists in this community, and every year, we have to turn people away who have magnificent projects in hand. So we'd like to keep strong support for that program, so we've increased that amount by 2,500. The other area where there's an important shift is in our Artist/Student/Mentor Program. You may recall last year that through my error, I submitted the wrong number, and as a result, we could not fully fund that program. This year, I'm requesting what we've received from many times before, $5,000 for that program. And that, coupled with the funding from the Ojai Education Foundation, will enable us to fully fund five pairs of artists and students in the 2019 year. I should add that this year, we have four splendid artists, ranging everywhere from glasswork to pastels, who will be working with students, and we have 11 applications from students for those four slots. So those two programs continue to thrive. The other new initiative that I think is potentially going to be very important is the fact that I've had discussions with Barbara Hirsch, who is a former Art Commission member and is currently heading the Picasso Project, which is responsible for all of the original art in the hospital, in the continuing care center, and now moving to fill the new hospital in Ventura with art. And in talking with her and in thinking about it, it occurred to me suddenly that the more we can get the city's collection out and visible to be shared by citizens in the city, the better. So I've spoken with Barbara, and Barbara and her committee is going to be working with Christine Byrne, who heads our gallery committee, and we're going to explore using the public spaces of the new continuing care center, which will open in January, they believe, as a satellite gallery for the city collection, so that the city collection will not only be on view here in the City Hall and on a continuing basis in the museum in a special area allocated for the city collection, but it will also have the potential of a probably biannually rotating display of artwork from the city council. So that, too, is incorporated in the money that we've requested for this year's budget. Thank you for your past support. It's enabled us to do the work that means a great deal to all of us on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mark Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mark Lewis, 515 Foothill. I'm the President of the Board of Trustees at the Ojai Valley Museum, and I wanted to add my voice to Wendy's in support of our budget request. Everyone loves Ojai. When you ask people why, they tend to mention specific things they love. They play tennis, golf, visit art studios, go hiking, commune with nature, et cetera, et cetera. It's a long list. They're all great experiences, but none is unique to Ojai. At the Ojai Valley Museum, Ojai is the experience. We bring it all together under one roof, the culture, the history, the art, and we share it with everyone who walks in the doors of our beautiful and historic building in the heart of downtown. The museum is, in fact, the heart of this town in a way. Our building is, used to be a church, and now in a way, it's kind of a temple, where we tend to flame that was lit here a century ago by Edward Libby, our community's great benefactor. Libby was also a great benefactor of his hometown, Toledo, Ohio, and as you know, the museum recently organized a group of Ojai people who went to tour Toledo, and one of the most impressive things, they report back, that Libby did there was to create a world-class museum, the Toledo Museum of Art. He never created a museum here in Ojai, but he was instrumental in creating the building that now houses our museum. And we'd like to think he'd be pleased with what we do in that building and with the way we work to keep his spirit alive in the town he so loved. You, the city, now own that building, and we hope you folks, too, are pleased with what we do there, and we hope you'll continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Regina Hirsch?
Hello, I'm Regina Hirsch with Sierra Watershed Progressive. I think I know most of you. I'm here to apologize that I was not at the council meetings the last two and wasn't available for questions for the comparative analysis on recharge and demand use for the study for Ojai City. And so I was instructed that this might be a good place to come and answer any questions. I know that there's no presentation avail, space available, so I wanted to make myself available.
Okay, well, thank you, Regina. And was that, that'll come up when the city manager does his presentation, at which point the council may have some questions for you.
Great, thank you.
Fine, thank you. Brian Akins?
So Brian Akins, I'm trustee and treasurer for the Ojai Valley Museum. Have my green binder, Randy. Just wanted to let you know, and I'm assured by Rudy and James, that the new updated list is in your packet. Hope you appreciate the size there, Councilwoman Francina. Again, just to point out that this is something that we do voluntarily. When the council first appropriated money some years ago, we thank you for your continued support there. Were really no conditions on us, but internally, we did, we did this so that we can be not only accountable internally, but accountable to you, the people who provide us the money. We allocate our money on a monthly basis throughout the year. We don't want anyone to get excited with an inflow of cash coming that first month and going off and buying something. We don't do that. We monitor our finances every month in our finance committee, go all the way down to the dollars, not quite down to the pennies. So I just wanted to know that that's there. The other thing, I'll see in the next hour, I'll have a different hat on, but when we're discussing the municipal code, you'll see within those changes that the Ojai Valley Museum is actually referred to, I think, four times as one of the referral sources for checking historical verification for the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, that is all the cards I have on public comments. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to make your presentation at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So my role here through the budget process is to give you an open and direct, honest assessment of what's happening with the budget, show you where the money is coming from and where it's going, and alert you of any potential fiscal concerns, both current and down the road. We certainly had a, some challenges with the budget this year. Obviously, we survived the Thomas Fire and came out relatively unscathed from that, and we did have some other impacts and surprises to the budget. But overall, we did come out okay, and we're projected to finish the year in the black, which is a pleasant outcome, which is the pleasant outcome that we were hoping and we were planning for. At the end of the day of this fiscal year, we're going to see a marginal increase in our savings. I think we're projecting, or I know we are projecting about $130,000 that would be able to go into the city's reserves at the end of the year. However, due to the rising operation budget, the percentage amount of, you know, because again, our general fund reserves are based on 50% of our operating budget. As the operating budget goes up, the reserve target has gone up as well. So even though we've been able to put money into the savings, we may actually be falling behind in terms of the percentage amount to reach that goal. Since we met a couple of weeks ago, we did meet back, staff did meet back with the budget committee, and they reviewed the recommended budget. They did recommend adoption of the budget as we presented. They did raise one area of concern in terms of the revenues that are projected for the planning fees, and I will address that a little bit later in my presentation. But beyond that, the budget committee did look at this, and they did recommend that the council adopt the budget as drafted. So this is a balanced projected budget for next fiscal year. It is very tight, and it does have a small contingency for those unanticipated expenses that we know pop up every year. And then the other thing that we worked on is our cash reserves. I alluded to that a little bit earlier. They're a little better stabilized now in terms of actually knowing what we have in our cash reserve. However, in our discussions with the budget committee, and I also know here at the city council, my recommendation would be that we revisit the cash reserve and the general fund policy reserve as a policy question in coming months, so that this can be clearly defined and understood. I'd recommend that we schedule that for a future meeting or a workshop for discussion. And then I guess the last point I wanted to make here in terms of the overall budget health, while we are setting aside money again in our capital improvement budget, and we do, again, have a structurally balanced budget, I would still argue that we were falling short in terms of what we actually need to be able to put aside to be able to maintain our streets and our roads and our buildings. As I've stated previously, we've been putting about $1.2 million a year in the capital improvement fund to maintain our streets, and to be able to get where we need to be in about 10 or so years where we would like to be on that pavement management index, we should be putting about $300,000 additional dollars in the CIP budget each year. So, again, we're able to meet our current needs and maintain our current standard of living, but there are always some things that we're not able to completely fund and to the level that we would like to. Wanted to note that we have several handouts that were provided this evening. One, we were given, staff was asked, and we did provide an unaggregated cash balance sheet, that is Attachment A for your review. We also provided a fund balance showing where we were at the audited statement at the end of June 2017, and projecting where we will be at the end of this fiscal year, and also where the general, where the fund balances will be projected at the end of 2018 and 2019. That is Attachment B. Attachment C is a revised Fund of 33 schedule. This is for the equipment replacement, and we'll discuss this capital improvement and the equipment replacement program a little bit later on this evening. We also provided a list of complete streets priorities, list the projects that have been completed and projects that are anticipated. This is coming back because council had asked, when we adopted the program, that we come back and have some discussion on prioritization of those projects. And then lastly, as Mr. Akins noted in his comments, we have a revised update from the museum showing their, their supported expenses through May of 2018. So moving on here, again, we've talked, had a little bit of discussion about our general fund reserve. Staff's interpretation is that those, the general fund reserve is the unrestricted, undesigned, and unallocated funds that are available to maintain service levels in times of emergency and recession. The unrestricted fund balance is generally considered a useful measure of your overall fiscal health and stability, and as we've stated before, the adopted resolution is to achieve a general fund reserve balance that is equal to or greater than 50% of the adopted fiscal year operating budget. Revenues, as we've stated before, are projected to increase next year from 9.43 to 10.11 million, and expenditures are projected to increase from 9.36 million to 10.11 million. Again, those two numbers do match up. We are projecting a balanced budget for 2018, 2019. As I stated, the reserve goal is 50% of the adopted general fund operating budget. As of June 30th, 2017, in the audited statements, we showed that amount to be 3.51 million. Finance director and staff have done a little further tinkering on that to show you what we had in terms of actual cash on hand as of January 31st, 2018. But again, we can get very confused very quickly when we start talking about the difference between cash and fund balance. However, in our discussions with the budget committee, clearly our understanding of the, staff's understanding of the reserve is that it's supposed to be a rainy day fund that can be used for emergencies, that is not spoken for or allocated for or earmarked for any other purpose. So again, on, at the end of, I think that should say, June 30th, 2018, the general fund reserve is likely to be unchanged, and as expenditures increase, the reserve percentage will likely decline, as I noted earlier. So this is another look again at how the revenues are broken up. We made a couple of adjustments to this from the previous presentation, wanted to show a little bit more detail in terms of the, we had some other and other and other and miscellaneous categories, so we wanted to break that out between the business licenses, franchise, and other taxes down there at the bottom, the intergovernmental transfers, and then we also broke out the miscellaneous licenses fees. So again, just bringing that back with a little more detail. And then on the expenditure side, no real changes there from what you saw before. Again, just, we oriented that side a little bit and noted that in the administrative category, it includes city manager, finance, city attorney, city clerk, city treasurer, city council, and the arts commission as well. So again, just recapping, proposed revenues for 1819, 10.11 million. Proposed expenditures, 10.11 million, and that is a structurally balanced budget. We do have some additional requests that are- We do have some additional requests that are not been funded and have not been discussed yet by council. One of those is the Phase Two and Three of the water infiltration grants. This would be the second and third phase of the work that we have engaged with Sierra Watershed Progressive. So that would be one thing that we'd like to talk about as we get into the CIP. And then we also, another request out there is to put $15,000 or some amount towards historic resource surveys in next fiscal year's budget. There is currently no money in the proposed budget for that. If there aren't any questions, if there are not any questions on that at this point...
Yes, sir, I just have one question. Is there any money in there for the affordable housing fund?
Yes, thank you. We will be putting that in there, and the question that I was going to bring to council tonight is whether you're not wanting to, we could appropriate the entire amount into the housing fund, and then we could bring projects forward as they arise, or you could put some smaller designated amount into the budget. So, I know the mayor had recommended that we allocate the full amount, and that way we would have the money there if council chose to want to direct that to any projects throughout the year. Of course, I would still need to come back and bring anything for action to council, so...
And then how about for the investment fund? Do we have any money, do we have the $50,000 they've requested for the investment fund in there?
So that would need to come out of the appropriation for the housing fund. So if council wanted to do that, we would bring that forward as a particular item for council to consider, and then if the money was already allocated, it would be in there and we could disperse it.
So, what's happening here then is that that's another request that would be another line on the previous slide?
Except it wouldn't be coming out of the general fund.
Okay, but it would be allocated out of the general fund?
It would be allocated out of the housing fund.
Okay, all right, so that's fine.
You know, the conversation at the finance committee was, in the past, we have money that's been earmarked for parking. We've had money that's earmarked for updating the general plan. We have an actual separate fund for the housing money, but it was never appropriated. And one of the, I guess, past practices or habits that the city has gotten into is to treat the rainy day fund, which really should be completely off the table, except when a declared emergency, according to the resolution, we have used that as kind of a contingency or, you know, for float. So, the recommendation from the finance committee to the city manager, and through the city manager to the council, is by appropriating those three accounts into the current budget, then the money will be there, and we will be looking not to the underfunded reserve, but to these special funds, and then you'll have an ability to make choices between the many competing interests for those kinds of money.
In that fund.
Yeah, right, and in answer to fall, it will cover, you know, should the city decide to partner with the trust fund, or any other jurisdiction, or just do it themselves, the money will be there. It's not been specified yet, and can't be spent until it comes back to the council.
Be in that, out of that fund.
Right.
Perfect.
Do we have, I'm sorry, Bill.
Just get back to the previous, and so the previous two lines are, those are the only two then out of the general fund that have been requested so far. I mean, we have, there might be others from council, for example, but that's the only two so far.
Correct. There are a couple of things that I might kind of fit in that category, just in terms of budgetary questions. One was that council wanted staff to take a look at the option of converting our building and safety and code enforcement into an in-house option. And we've looked at the cost for that, and if we were to go in-house, we believe that that would actually be, would come in at or below existing budget. So, we would have money in the budget, again, if we were to make that conversion, we would not be needing additional money.
Well, let me just fill up real quick. So the water infiltration grants, that would be part of the CIP program?
If, right, and it's currently, it is not currently in the proposed CIP.
That would be part of the CIP, so...
That is correct.
Discuss within the CIP discussion.
Correct.
And then historic resources survey, that's part of the historic resources commission budget?
Right, and that is currently not included, and that would be coming out of the general fund.
That's where the two questions would be taken up. That's all I want to know. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just needed to know, what was the, what's the balance right now into, in the housing?
The affordable housing fund has, as of today, has approximately $200,000. We'll be getting more funds annually when we receive the RDA loan repayment from the state.
Okay. And is there anything in the resolution that dictates how that money has to be spent?
It's dictated by the, I have it here in front of me, it's dictated by state law in terms of how we can spend those monies. Health and safety codes, sections 34176 and 34176.1, provide the statutory restrictions on how we can use the RDA low and moderate income housing fund.
And if I could add a comment on that, without getting too deep in the weeds, it boils down to projects that provide for capital A affordable housing at one of the specific income levels, moderate, very low, and low income, and at least 55 years restricted.
And the council's indication that they want to go ahead and develop Montgomery Street and start providing some housing. Mr. Miley and I met with the city manager and his staff a couple of times, and we came to the agreement to delay going forward with what we need to do next, which is to give you a plot plan and elevations as to what might go on that lot. Because there was nothing in the budget, we were going to come back a month or two ago, and then we decided that probably the better way to go is to just go ahead and appropriate housing money, and then that would be one of the things that could be covered in that.
Up that fund separately.
And we, by, well, yeah, by July, we would then be able to come back to you probably with specifics, and we'll include that in the discussion with the housing trust fund folks, and to see if there is, you know, a mutual benefit. We'd very much like to leverage the money for our project. The concern the council has expressed in the past is that we want to attempt to address some of the housing problems, which are, I guess, probably universal, but certainly statewide and nationwide every time you pick up the newspaper, so it's not just us. But it needs to, something needs to be done, even if it is, at this point, just a gesture, and we want to do it for a little Ojai, because that's what we've been talking about for years, and this is a chance to do it. So if there's a way to do that with the trust fund, that'd be great. If not, we'd do it directly, but we should get into the housing business a bit, but do it in a way that's acceptable to the neighbors and is helpful both to the business community as well as to the citizens. Okay, Steve?
Also wanted to quickly note that we, and I think I'm repeating myself here from previously, but we do have $50,000 that would be appropriated for the general plan update, and also $31,000 from the parking fund to do a parking study. We currently have about $31,000 in the parking fund.
Those are those separate funds, out of those separate funds.
That's correct, that's correct.
And what was the earmark for the parking? What did you say?
$31,000 in the budget, and we have just over $31,000 in the fund, so it's pretty much appropriating all of that. The other thing that I wanted to note that had come up throughout the year in terms of something that we said that we would address during the budget, it came up during the Thomas Fire, the desire, need to have a backup radio transmitter. We looked into that. We found that the cost of it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. Through our resources, and we were actually able to find another city that is serviced by the shares department, who has agreed to loan that to us if it is needed. They have more than one. So if we are in a pinch and ours goes down, we'll be able to acquire that and tow it over here and put that to work. So, and we think that will give us the backup that we need without having to sacrifice the funds.
Okay.
So, so we are just about to move into, I think I'm going backwards, into the capital improvement program. If I could ask Mr. Grant to come up, we have a little bit of time here still to go through the projects that are proposed, and see if you have any questions or comments on that. Greg, if you could go through that?
Before Greg starts, we have, what, 17 minutes, and for the benefit of the audience and our procedure here, this is to simply present what the staff has put together. When is the next workshop? And it probably needs to be a little bit longer than what we're doing now.
Well, we can talk about that. We don't have one set right now, but we have a couple of dates coming up where we could hold one. We could also hold one prior to the June 12th meeting, although I would recommend that maybe we try and find perhaps the Tuesday before, which is not scheduled for anything, perhaps that June 5th, and then we would just have a budget workshop that evening.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. I think the summary that the city manager's put up here is pretty helpful. I mean, in general, it shows the amount of monies that were projected to be at year-end here in the first column, and the second column of numbers is the budgeted for next year. So in general, the road overlays, we're trying to do on an every-two-year cycle, so that we consolidate the efficiencies for paving. So it takes a lot of work to pull that design together and to get the bid out and so on. So we're doing that every two-year cycle. So this project this year, we just are wrapping up now, is about 1.67 million, with a lot of complete street measures and ADA measures included. And we had minimal parks, we had quite a bit of complete streets associated with that road overlay project, but also you see the Whispering Oaks project's underway out there now, and we have designed, we're still trying to get permits on the Maricopa crossings. There's been quite a few changes by Caltrans that have been cycling through, and as well as the crosswalks downtown here. We had Blanche, and Blanche, Montgomery, and Kenyatta. Those are flashing beacons as well that are being permitted at this time. And then we do have a separate, I'm not sure when the city manager wanted to cover that, but we have a separate priority list that the council wanted to address, the complete street priorities. So I presume we'll do that either after this, at your discretion.
I would just maybe just go through, try to give an overview here before we get into that detail, it might be helpful.
Okay. And next year, we're planning to do a few parking lots, the same thing, we try to consolidate some of the parking lot slurries and repairs. So we have quite a bit planned for next year. In particular, the Lower Libby parking lot is deteriorated heavily. We're waiting for that bike park to go in. At this time, the group has not been pushing that, so we are going to proceed with some of that repair, because it's on the brink of, if we don't do the slurry soon, we're going to lose that parking lot. I think the facilities in general, you can see allocations going up significantly for next year, and sorry about that reminder here. We have some facilities significantly, I think primarily that's roofing. We've got quite a few roof projects between City Hall and Museum and the Boyd Center, which have to be put in this year. So that's the upcoming budget. For drainage, we had the master drainage plan, which at one time the council had asked for the RFP to include stormwater capture. I believe the seed money with SWP, I believe is the name of the company, Regina's here, I think that seed money takes care of that initial study you were looking for, the stormwater capture concept, and then the Phase Two and Three are further into the developing projects further, if we find they can work for us. So I think the RFP, I don't know if we even need to bring that back to council at this point, but it's a master drainage plan update, which would not involve stormwater capture at this time. And then we had the transit, these funds are transferred over to transit. We have two new trolleys, which are more like half a million, but a lot of that's budgeted under the vehicle replacement fund. And we had some minor projects over in the public works yard, and we're doing the new security fencing with automated gates up front. That was all paid by grant money, as well as we had a sound wall and some stormwater improvements in the back as far as capturing the washpad runoff and putting in the storm drain and cleaning it up. So that's the rough review of what the capital improvements are. I think we have the detail is the sheet, there's a recap sheet in the packet, which has the full recap somewhat like this, but in much more detail per fiscal year. But then there's another category where each fiscal year is broken out with Fund 31 versus other funds, and that tells how much money is coming from grants and other sources. And that's got the detail. I guess in quick summary, the Fund 33 is related to capital improvement fund. It has IT and equipment as well as vehicle replacement. So we have some projected, some proposed expenditures in that area. We have, it has the trolleys in there, there's a few new trucks for the crew, there was other minor vehicle replacement things. There's a, the striping equipment is going to be replaced, is severely outdated and falling apart, as well as the, in the IT area, there's a detailed spread on that as well. It has, for instance, the, it's IT and equipment on one spreadsheet, so that includes the $60,000 grant we have for battery-powered landscape equipment. So that's coming to the council for the next meeting to be authorized to proceed with the purchasing for that. And we have some generators staged at various facilities around the city that need some upkeep that we've phased in as well. I think in general, oh, and the PEG funding, that's all. We have pegged the television station to do some upgrades on that equipment to increase the reliability of that equipment as well.
Mayor, could I ask a question? Greg, was the battery electric landscaping equipment, wasn't that a, are you saying that we're matching $70,000? Wasn't that a matching fund?
No, that's actually $60,000 by grant and about $10,000 to match.
Okay, and that also includes upgrading the service yard for battery recharging and...
It's $70,000, yes. So, at this point, unless there's any other questions, we could go into the detail of the capital improvement program, or I could answer...
Mayor Johnson?
Your direction.
I have a question, like some clarity on it. That has to do with the previous, couple of previous slides about the $82,000 for water infiltration not being allocated. You just said something about that that was part of the stormwater, you don't have to go there. That was part of the stormwater out-of-line item in the CIP that you just laid out. I'm trying to understand how this is going to work out in terms of, since a lot of the Sierra Progressive proposals have to do with CIP grants, that have grant CIP implications. Are we already overlapping a little bit in terms of the budget proposal from your comment in terms of being handled by?
The original intention was utilize the drainage fund to do, it's really, looking at the code, it's intended for the drainage, the master drainage plan, which is all the pipes and ditches and culverts around the city that move stormwater away to prevent flooding.
No, but what I'm trying to talk about is...
Bill, I think I can answer the question for you. You're talking about the money for the consulting work to prepare things, and what is in the capital projects budget is a possible in-kind contribution credit for matching once we got a grant. So they're two separate things. The 84, whatever it is, we ended up with, what, 15 that was appropriated or authorized to be spent, and there are two more segments of what really is, as the city manager pointed out, I mean, it's a total project. We need to discuss how we're going to pay for that separately. This isn't going to pay for it.
But I asked earlier if that's going to be included in the CIP fund budget, and that's what I was trying to understand, is how we're going to be including that in a line item in the CIP fund.
Right now, it's not in there as proposed, so that if council wants to include that, we could come back, or we could listen to your, we could come out with a recommendation on it, or we could take council suggestions on it. But if council feels strongly about trying to set that money aside, because again, we need to get through the first phase, and then bring that back and assess that, but if we're going to, if we think we're going to commit to it now, it makes sense to set that money aside in the budget, rather than get to pass Phase One and then...
We're not going to be able to, unfortunately, because of the time to do this. I had conversations with Regina, and I think we have a fairly good grasp what the consultant needs. They've already got, I guess, you've got an agreement to go ahead with the $15,000 portion of it. It turns out, that's going to move very quickly, you know, and it's not like it's going to be three months. And the second portion of this thing probably also needs to move pretty quickly, trying to target the August deadline, whatever is of the state, if there's some, quote, I wasn't going to say free money, but money that is not requiring a local match or able to be secured by an in-kind contribution through the capital project. My suggestion to us is, to deal with that, is we've already given the go signal on the first part, and that we should endorse and give some portfolio to the consultant to then go forth and secure partners to join with us, with the understanding that even though this is going to be a one-time expenditure, which we could take up after we get the report back like in July on the first phase, with a... back like in July on the first phase, with a commitment of the city saying that we're going to do our part in this, and...
Should we give that go-forth direction at this time, right now?
Yeah, I suppose, you know, you mean as far, well, I think we gave the go-forward on the first part. I think what we just need to do is to make a public, you know, statement that, you know, we are, this is one of our agents or our representatives, and that we will join with them in trying to raise the balance of the money, one way or another.
We have direction for go-forward on that.
Yeah, so if you...
So what I'm hearing...
Do we need to make a motion in that regard, or just...
Well, it wouldn't hurt to have it in the record that we're endorsing the project so that...
So we're endorsing Phase Two, Phase Three?
No, we're endorsing the consultant, and we've already approved the first part of this, and what we're saying is, is that the consultant is now authorized on our behalf using our name, and we will join with the consultant in attempting to get other partners, because this is going well beyond the city limits if we do it right.
So I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, any discussion?
Well, I guess the only thing I wanted to add into it is, do we designate, do we need to designate at this time any additional funding to support Phase Two and Phase Three, that it come out of the CIP fund?
I think we'll get to that.
Or are we going to wait until that time comes forward and then have the city manager address where that money?
Well, we can't, in the five minutes we have allocated for this, you know, come up with how this is to be done, because we're going to make choices.
I'm just...
Yeah, no, no, I'm trying to answer the question, that at the workshop, I suggest that we then delve into this, and the workshop be more than an hour before.
I suggest we just endorse them soliciting, and that's it.
Right.
That's what I understand your motion to be, in our name.
I need a little clarification. What is it that we're voting on?
The authorization for Sierra Watershed Progressive. Watershed Progressive is acting on our behalf in going forth with this whole project, which the city is behind, to get partners to join us in the balance of this, this, what is it, another 84,000 or something?
Eighty-two, correct, right.
Yeah, 82,000, and that we are committed to the project to do our part, and that will be defined by how many partners we can get, not unlike the...
And what defines the project and what defines partners?
Okay, well, what defines, well...
That will be brought back to us.
Yeah, partners would be people who would look at the proposal and see what we're doing, and say, yeah, we see the general benefit of this to the valleys, and that we're going to step up and help, and the city's providing the leadership to say, and we're already started and we will continue, but we're not taking the whole load on ourselves right now. It's not unlike what they did in the watershed management, the Northern, North Ventura River watershed management, when Bruce came by and said, we want to do an economic impact evaluation, and they approached the OPGMA, they approached us, they approached CASIDAS. We would do something similar to that, and recognize that if everybody's in agreement, the last motion on the floor said that we weren't making any future commitment, the one we, two weeks ago, but we will have time to look at this and say, yeah, we're going to go forward with it if we, after we see the first product, which I understand will be available in a couple of weeks, and then we can say, okay, let's raise the money, or we may have to decide that if nobody else does it and we still have a high value on it, that we'll consider it a one-time expenditure, not increasing our general operating budget, and we'll have the city manager provide the funds.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Just to, my way of summarizing that, Councilman Blatch, is that we're authorizing them to go forward, you know, in our stead, to develop specific proposals for us to consider. That's how I understand it.
To seek partners.
To seek partners, to seek collaboration.
We're talking about definition.
We're not committing funds.
Financial partners.
We're not committing funds. We're not committing funds.
All of these agencies have, you know, a responsibility and...
So does this mean that we are committing ourselves to 82,000?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time, but when they approved the 15, we pretty much started down that road, which questions is how we're going to pay for it.
This is not a budget decision. This is a soliciting proposals, collaborative proposals, collaborative structures for us to consider.
And we're buying, to be blunt, we're buying a little time and getting more data or more information on which to make the decision if going forward.
Okay, and there could be the decision we're not going to go forward.
Well, it's possible, yeah, right. Until we say go, you know, with a motion, we...
And my point, kind of listening to all that, would be, there's going to be a decision point when we get the Phase One study back, but what I'm saying is if the council wants to move forward to Phase Two and Three at that point, you might want to think about setting aside money for Phase Two and Three now.
Not right now.
Not, well, but in, right, in next year's budget.
Not at 10 minutes until...
In the budget period.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Clerk?
Mayor Protemhaney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, so Regina, put on your running shoes.
Go forth.
The clock is starting. Okay, thanks.
And Greg, you'll be available in your office for questions?
Right. Yeah, I've already worked with Regina. Everybody's dead and so on, right? We're ready to roll.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm seeing that we were about to wrap up here, and I just, we're clear for June 5th for a budget workshop. If you want, if everybody's available at 6:00 PM, we'll go ahead and start at that time, and hopefully we can get through the rest of this fairly quickly, and then we will be coming back on the 12th for adoption.
Okay, and that's not a council meeting night, so we can spend some time on it.
That's correct.
Does that work for everybody?
My gosh, yeah.
I think Paul's checking his calendar, but...
Paul, you don't have night court.
He's an enterprising sort. He might be a renter judge.
Can he sing, Mel Tormann?
I do. Yeah, it's fine, but I do a lot.
He's checking to see if he has a life.
Yeah, okay, if there's no objection, then, Mr. City Manager, go ahead and schedule the workshop.
That's funny.
Okay.
Is that 6:00?
Yeah, 6:00.
Yes, 6:00.
And we'll try to get out at a reasonable hour. Okay.
All right, we're taking a little break.
Okay, we'll take a short break, and then we'll go into the regular session. Thank you, everybody.
Could we?